Hey, I saw you have her in behind.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know. I remember ya.
What'd you do to your knee? Get surgery or what?
Well, the last place we want a license, they give us a recreational license here. I don't know why we're there.
Kick him in the balls in that one.
Well, I feel, I think.
Good story, I like it.
In the prayer? Okay. All right, perfect. Thanks. Who? Harvey, you're heading the wrong way. Influence when they're not supposed to. All right, we all set? All right, it's Tuesday, March 19th, 2024. We'll call the City Council regular meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Would everyone please rise for the invocation, followed by the Fledge of Allegiance given by Dan Zander?
Most gracious God, we thank you for this day, for this council meeting business. We wanted to take care of it for now. We pledge for all the council meetings and city council members here and the audience. And we wanted to be with you, and we love you, God, and we have to get this thing smooth so we can so we can do our business. In our name and praise. Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Curly?
Here.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Here.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Here.
Councilmember Pashadlik?
Here.
Moving on to approval of the agenda, would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Sir Spork?
Sagan.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Pashadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
All right, moving on to the first hearing of the public, the hearing of the public is now open. Would anyone wish to be heard? Ms. Moragin.
Karen Moragin, East Point resident. So again, no purchase of bunnies, chicks, and ducks for Easter. Bunnies are a lifetime commitment. You're either gonna take them for life or just don't take them at all. They're not toys, they're not starter pets, they're not disposable, they're not wild. They cannot survive on their own outside, and they certainly don't belong in outdoor hutches. They're prey animals, and they can easily die from fright, and they'll chew on anything they can sink their teeth into. Free roam bunnies require that the house is completely bunny-proof. That means no wires or cords of any kind be left on the floor. Rabbits do require extensive care, specialized diets. You have to find an exotic rabbit-savvy vet. The office visits are now up to $85, if not more. And the spay and neuters, you need to get that done by six months of age, and that typically runs $250 or more. You need to do annual wellness exams, those are necessary. Those include blood, fecal, and urine tests. Those run over $200, and it's gonna be even more money if x-rays are required. Some rabbits need regular teeth trims because their teeth are constantly growing. They grow down, and then they curve, and they'll go up through the roof of their mouth, so that's why they're always chewing. And some rabbits sadly need that kind of dental care, and with anesthesia, sadly, some of them do die under anesthesia. Let's see, you know, ER vets, those visits, that can range anywhere from $300 to $1,000 or more, just depending on what kind of emergency situation you're dealing with. They must not and cannot be fed any products that contain nuts, seeds, honey, yogurt, or dairy. Kale, spinach, cabbage, broccoli, you know, etc., you can't give those to bunnies, and you can't be giving them fruit on a daily basis. It's too high in sugar. They have a very delicate GI tract. And you just really have to be hypervigilant when it comes to rabbits. You can't just go, oh, well, you know, maybe they'll be okay tomorrow. No, you can end up with a dead bunny. And bunnies will kick, scratch, and bite when they're stressed or scared. I recently heard of a six-year-old child that was given a bunny for Easter, and, you know, the negligent parent was not present, the child squeezed the bunny so hard, the poor bunny died. These are sociable animals, and they do best when they're bonded, of course, spayed or neutered. So again, no bunnies, chicks, or ducks for Easter.
Thank you.
And take them, or take them, or don't take them at all. Take them for life, or don't take them all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hall-Rafer?
Good evening, council. Couple of things I wanted to mention on the agenda. And I hope that everyone exercised a little more thought and attention to fine details, research, before proposing major projects to the city, especially if it's going to impact a lot of the residents and our businesses. So with regard to the item J, the discussion of adult-use marijuana. Someone couldn't be here today, and they wanted me to ask this question about how is this going to be determined when the facilities for the medical marijuana have, nothing has been done with that? Is this going to be an extension or an instead of? Exactly what are we proposing to do with this? And so I would hope that consideration for everyone. I can't speak for everyone here, but I know sometimes now, walking out my back door, I will almost overcome with the smell of weed. Not a very pleasant experience. So we need to really get this some thought as to how this is going to impact everyone. Even though the adult use is not necessarily legalized or accepted here, it is being done, and it could be extremely excruciating and frustrating for someone who doesn't smoke at all. So I'd ask you to think about that. And I'm hoping that in the future, when we have lawsuits on the book, that they are either all mentioned by name or none mentioned by name. That type of inconsistency demonstrates bias to me, and it's unfair and unjust bias. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mike Lamoll, East Point resident. I understand we got a letter, I have a copy of it anyhow, but we have a letter that in regards to the Nine Mile Road project, so I understand there might be a discussion on voting for it. I would hope that we pass it, and if we do, I would hope that we leave all of the driveways and parking areas as they are, as for instance, Deroni's and E.C. Trybakeery. Both of them use them extensively, even with the parking lot at E.C. Trybakeery. I thank you for that. The other thing I see is we, the discussion on adult marijuana. What I would like to know, and for the public's interest, what our tax profit net would be? If we passed it, would it be, would we be making any money out of it? And would we be able to control it? As you know, the place on 15 and Grove that blew up was a supplier. And they had nitrous oxide and everything. I don't think these people will have that if they do get their thing, but I would like to see, I'd like to know what our profit margin's gonna be from that. That's a hell of a way to say it. But I'd like to know what we're gonna get out of it, because with the way our funds are, if it's gonna be some extensive money, we could use it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing of the public is closed, and we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we receive and file the minutes of the regular meeting of February 20th, 2024.
Second then.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Pashadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Excuse me. Moving on to scheduled hearings, item A, scheduled public hearing for the State of Michigan Department of Natural Resources grant opportunities for the parks. There were a number of projects that were sort of detailed. That hearing is now open. Would anyone like to be heard, just in terms of speaking to the parks? Anyone wish to be heard? I think this is just our, unless is, well, let me do this. I'll close the public hearing. And then, before moving on, Ian, did you want to speak to any of that? Okay, thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and members of the public. My name's Ian McCain. I'm the Economic Development Manager for the city. I also serve as a board member for RARE, and I'm very excited about three potential grant opportunities through the Michigan Department of Natural Resources that we could pursue, and I hope we will vote to pursue later this evening. So this is to have a hearing to get feedback on these different ideas for three of our parks. To start off, the three grant programs are the Natural Resource Trust Fund, and that funding would be directed towards Spindler Park, the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant, which would be directed towards Kennedy Park, and the Passport Grant, which would be directed towards Shamrock Park. There are two options for each park, starting off with Spindler. Option A, which was the recommendation from the Parks Commission, includes lighting, walkway improvements, new picnic shelters, and similar improvements. The second option for Spindler Park would focus more on improving the tennis courts and installing a basketball court next to the existing tennis courts. For Kennedy Park, option A, we would submit the Kennedy Park Fitness Trail and Pavilion application as we applied for previously through the Spark Grant Program, and this was also the option that was recommended by the Parks Commission. For option B for Kennedy Park, we would basically utilize this funding to complement the $1.5 million grant that we received to install a splash pad at Kennedy Park. So we would shift the picnic shelter that was initially included in option A from the southeast to the northeast corner of the park, and possibly scale back the fitness trail, like I said, to complement the grant award that we received through the Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity. And that would also help us, since we already have that $1.5 million, meet the matching fund requirements through the DNR, because that is a 50-50 match fund grant. And then, last but not least, Shamrock Park, our first option would be to put a full walking path around the perimeter of the park and a basketball court on the southeast corner of the park. That was the recommendation from the Parks Commission. And then, option B, which we submitted last year through the Passport Grant Program, we were five points away from being awarded this grant, would include two soccer fields, a shorter walking path that would kind of go halfway around the park, and a small pavilion. All of these, ideally where and when we can, would include green stormwater infrastructure, so rain gardens and different things like that. And we would also design them to be ADA-accessible and utilize universal design. That's a high-level overview. If you have technical questions about anything, I would direct those to Mr. Kern. If you have any questions about engagement with the Parks Commission or the public, I'd be happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you. And if anyone has any questions, we actually have this discussion on these later on on the agenda, so I think we'll ask those under that item. All right. We will move on to unfinished business. Discussion and motion on the MDOT update on the status of the Nine Mile Road reconstruction project. Would, well, I don't know if either the Assistant City Manager or Mr. Kern would like to open this, just to explain perhaps the communication we had received.
I can start, Mr. Mayor, if I may. So on Thursday, we got some notification, and then Friday morning, we got the correspondence from MDOT. It is our understanding from MDOT, as they also took to the Federal Highway Administration, that this council needs to make a decision tonight as to which path to move forward. I know the decision had been made to design a three-lane plan for Nine Mile moving forward. Sorry, don't move, stay focused on the microphone. However, MDOT has informed us that due to the change of scope, that the current funding is not, cannot be used for the three-lane. There's additional information that is needed. So the decision tonight from council is either to move ahead with the five-lane reconstruction as previously submitted. There will be a few small edits. We are getting some grants for green infrastructure and rain gardens, so there will be additional areas opened up along Nine Mile for that. The final designs must be submitted by AEW MDOT next week, I believe the 26th, for bid letting in June. We are up against some deadlines. The Federal Highway Administration does hold June meetings for projects have not yet started, so those in the military, there's gonna understand, there's gonna be some rug dancing. The other thing is that we have the Phase 3, the 100% federal funding for Tuscany to I-94 that is in place. As mentioned, MDOT said due to the change of scope, which was the changing, basically, the intent of the project is no longer just a reconstruction, that the funds cannot be used, the current funds. They said the traffic studies from 2021 needed, were not acceptable. They were not comfortable with the data from 2021, as it was taken during the COVID pandemic. So they would want that to be redone, or studies to be done, new studies to be done. So five-lane, if council chooses to go with the three lanes, there must, we must get a vote to de-obligate the funds. Tabling or taking no action, according to MDOT and the Federal Highway Administration, would be the same as declining the funds. We, of course, as you know, as everybody knows, the current condition of Nine Mile, we will need to find, it was anticipated that the construction would be coming along right behind the water, the water main replacements, so we will need to find some funding to fix, to put some fixes in. We don't know, according to MDOT, there's a chance that we may lose the federal funding, and if the Phase 2 is not done, we may lose the federal funding for Phase 3. One of the one of the other concerns was that, as of right now, the earliest possible funding, I mean, should we conduct all these, these traffic studies and the capacity analysis, and then go through the steps with the MOP, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the rank until, to create the new design? The city must be able to prove through the data that the three lanes will work, particularly for state or federal funding. The earliest possible funding at this time would be the summer of 2028, because all the years are planned out, found out in advance. So, and I believe Mr. Blum has an update on how much funding we actually would, do have set aside for the major and local roads, if you guys needed that information.
Well, I think at this point, would anyone want to open up discussion?
Sure.
Unless some, oh, go ahead.
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to, Mayor. So I think, I guess, first of all, I think we can work together and make this happen. Clearly, of course, read the email in our packet, but I think we could work with MDOT, SEMCOG, and the Federal Highway Administration to figure this out, you know, put some meetings together, you know, and invite council as part of it. You know, if a council member wants to join a discussion, do that. And we can show how this would be beneficial to the community. So the questions, I guess I have would be, so Friday, though, so that was the first time the city had heard this from MDOT, right, that there was no project limit or scope changes allowed, is what they were saying? That was the first time the cities heard this from MDOT, right?
Yes, and this was the time that they told us that without the five lanes, that we would have to decline the funding and move forward with our own.
And so then, yeah, we submitted documents to them, well, from emails that you've sent to council on February 13th, and we're just now hearing this then from MDOT? That we can't do that?
I can answer that. I know that's accurate. I did have some call with MDOT a while back, and they had mentioned to me, like, the concern about the obligation, things like that, but the first time that the city, other than maybe a casual conversation, actually received any sort of, this is the state of things in writing, was on Friday. I understand that correctly, right?
Yes, we received a notification, we received a correspondence on Thursday that said that they were waiting for a decision from the City of East Point. We didn't quite know what that meant. So then we set up a conversation on Friday morning, and that's when we had the conversation, that they said they had been in contact, they were waiting to hear what the city was going to do, either move ahead with the five lanes and keep the grant funding, or move ahead with the three lanes and de-obligate the funding that's available.
Yeah, because I guess I asked that especially, and maybe we just need to have some more discussions, because before we voted as a city council on the road diet, February 6th, I had had a meeting with MDOT where I asked, I said, "We're considering a reduction in lanes from five to three lanes." Would that be purely a policy question for the city council then, or would there be any reason for MDOT to be against us doing that? And Representative at MDOT said, "Definitely, MDOT will not be against it." So to me, I felt comfortable then with our vote on that date going forward. So I guess I'd like to clear up this confusion, because you know, we went like a month then without hearing from them. They said they'd also been waiting since February 20th, but we didn't hear anything until Friday, right? And who, I guess who at MDOT is specifically responsible for making this decision, because right now, we just have it, right, it's just a sentence in an email from, you know, someone at MDOT on a huge project, right? Like, that doesn't seem very formal. I feel like we could do some follow-up and kind of clarify some things, instead of just going off one, you know, one sentence in one email. Because I even called this person from MDOT, and they seemed to indicate some statistics from the traffic study that I had never heard. I went back even to our original 2021 study, and the things he was saying weren't even in the traffic study when we did it for three lanes across the entire community. He was saying some of the level of service went from C to F, but even when we, even when we had that in 2021, when AEW did the traffic study then, it didn't show that. So I think this representative at MDOT also doesn't have, you know, I don't know who they've talked to, of course, there's MDOT employees, but this specific person that wrote this email does not have the correct data, or wasn't, you know, he wasn't familiar with the correct traffic study.
Was that a question, or are you just?
Well, I guess these, I just have like a lot of questions, I think, before we should move forward on that. That's, you know, some of them, you know, and is it, are they saying, you know, can they, can we talk to SEMCOG and the Federal Highway Administration about this? Also, like, if they change something, would MDOT be fine with it, kind of thing, too? And I think we don't know any answers to that sort of thing.
If I may, it was made pretty clear to administration that the deadline is now for the funding. If we want to have conversations, if we want to consider options, then we can do that, but the funding is gone for this current project. It was, MDOT made it very clear that it is coming from the Federal Highway Administration. I mean, it's not being for or against, it is just that the current funding, due to the change of scope, cannot be used for a proposed three-lane. There's not enough information put together yet for that to move forward, so it's not a question of any of that or being for or against. It's the question that, due to the timing, that the Federal Highway Administration has said, "This is it." One way or the other, if we want to move forward, and if that's what we choose to do, then that's what council chooses to do. But we have to give them a decision as of tonight, and if we don't make a decision, then it will be taken as we have declined the funding.
Mr. Kern, can I ask, I don't have the timeline in front of me that we initially put together, but when was it that we were expecting to submit the bid package, you know, in the timeline that we had put together for the three-lane?
With the road diet alternative, the final deadline for, the final planned submittal deadline was April 26th. That was the absolute latest that we could submit for the road diet.
Okay.
In order to keep the federal funding that we currently have. The federal funding that we have expires on September 13th, so we have to have shovel in the ground and have something completed by September 13th of this year.
And invoiced.
And invoiced, correct.
But we were told on Friday that this is it. We're not waiting for April 26th. So they need a decision.
No, where does it say that we need to make a decision today? Nothing I've ever been given up to this moment says that.
I suppose that's why I asked that question, is because in order to go with the existing project, if we had until April 6th, it doesn't make sense that we couldn't at the next meeting.
April 26th is the absolute deadline that would get you to the July bid letting.
Yep.
Which would get you at the earliest an August award on the contract, which is cutting it very tight in order to get something going on the project, and you're relying on MDOT to make sure that that contract award happens on on MDOT to make sure that that contract award happens on time as well.
And I think some of the other concerns, if I may, are that we're going to lose contractors, the prices are going to go up, and contractors are booking up starting this month when all the contracts go out, but it was, we were told specifically, if we don't have an answer tomorrow, that, that the funding is gone.
So, how come this was never shared with city council, though?
It, it was shared on Friday as soon as we got it.
No, but the thing about, they need an answer today, nothing says, the information we were given says they're requiring that today.
I, I, well, I have to agree with that, I don't think that we were made aware that tonight acted as some sort of deadline, but we did get that, the email with all the information that MDOT put in writing forwarded to us. Okay, so, this, this project has been a moving target, it's been a bit of a headache, because it seems like when we reach out to different organizations, we keep getting different answers on, on how things need to proceed. The, I did have some conversations today with the Federal Highway Administration, who verbally told me on the phone, it was with Andrew Seibold, who's with the Michigan Chapter of the Administration, explained to me, he didn't see any reason it would be de-obligated, he thought that was a strange thing, because the, there are projects that have changes in scope after the obligation. However, I said, I explained, and I want to qualify this, because, because that's very different than what we've been indicated from MDOT, I asked him to put something in writing, I sent him an email, I haven't gotten a response yet, but he said he would run it through, kind of up the chain on his end, to make sure that we had the correct information. That said, I'm, I'm, I'm getting to the point where I don't know that it matters what the answer to that question is, because I'm concerned about, I, I do think it's possible the project could be re-scoped through a tip amendment, I'm not entirely sure that the de-obligation is actually correct, that that would be necessary, I understand Mr. Kern had conversations also with Macomb County, the Federal Aid Committee, who also thought that it might have to be de-obligated.
That's correct.
So, there's been a lot of questions on what would have to happen with the process. I do, I do feel sure of this much, that if there is a de-obligation, because it's for the past fiscal year, there's no guarantee that it would be re-obligated under the new design of the project, and that's concerning for me. At the outset of this entire project, the deadline that was put together for us, we looked at it because we were considering what the risk would be, that was something we had to weigh, what is the risk of losing, at least for me, losing the federal funding and going forward with the change, and the risk seems pretty low, it seems like we could get everything done within the deadline. However, when Ryan Kern put that, that timeline together, it did not contemplate this de-obligation, because that extends this process. I am not entirely sure that the information we have gotten on some of these steps is correct, I still think there's stuff up in the air, and I will continue to educate myself, because I don't ever want to come up against something like this again. I don't think I can cast a vote for a de-obligation, if this was a vote instead to just have a tip amendment, which still would be a tight timeline, they, they consider, I think they bring out new results for tip amendments in May, even if we went that route, it would be a tight timeline, but at least the funds would still be obligated. So, I, I'll start with that, I, I can't cast a vote to de-obligate the funds, I think that's too risky, I think at the start of this, at least I, I tried to be clear with people, we wouldn't push so hard for redesign, that we would end up losing funding, because that would just be the worst thing, I think, that we could do. That said, the Phase Three is another question, so when we are talking about the road diet and what we're voting on, or considering tonight, it's just Phase Two. I, we have, I think at the next meeting, actually, a regular meeting, we need to start having discussions on Phase Three. The road, my understanding is, for those of us who want the road diet, it would extend into Phase Three, so that, I believe, is still on the table, and the reason I bring that up is because if council does vote to go forward with Phase Two, keeping it at five lanes, I think there's still going to be discussions on road diet, I don't know that that's the, the end of it, so I kind of wanted to be clear about that, because I know a lot of misinformation ends up on Facebook, especially on this topic. I'm gonna, lastly, end with a question. Given that we've been told there's a timeline to get this in for bid letting soon, if we say, "Okay, fine, five lanes for this stretch," if we still want something like reducing the width of any of the lanes, or just like a small reduction in the road, is that possi, I think that's an engineering question, because it goes to design?
Correct, we would have to meet the MDOT and Federal Highway Administration guidelines as far as lane widths, I'd have to look to see, we're at the minimum now, but, I know we've talked, there are a few tweaks that we do need to make to the five-lane plan, of course, that plan was designed several months ago now, so there are a few tweaks that we do need to make, as Ms. Holman had mentioned, we've been talking about stormwater management and rain gardens, so in order to incorporate those, some changes need to be made, and there's also been some changes made in the DDA area, where originally, we were proposing to replace the brick pavers within the DDA district, and the DDA has since decided to move forward with doing standard concrete and the brick edging instead, so there's some tweaks there as well. And there's some other minor design tweaks that we can make as well, but certainly, we can do that, but we do, our, our goal, if you do proceed with the five-lane plan, our goal is to get those plans back over to MDOT next week, so that it can be on the June letting, and we can continue and try to get this under construction as quickly as possible.
Thank you. So the answer is, yes, there's going to be some tweaking, but...
Yes, yes.
Okay. There was other, one other point I wanted to make, and then ask if anyone else wants to speak, because I have the floor for a minute. We did send updated stuff, studies, that email indicated that the flows wouldn't allow for that kind of reduction, I don't know if that person who sent that email, which I believe was Mr. Doyle, had seen the studies that AEW had completed, the grading for all the intersections, I believe, either remained the same, and then, I believe, one actually improved. So the study itself, if we had gone forward, I think ultimately, this, this project would be approved, it seems to be ticking on the boxes. The, the traffic study indicated that flow would be relatively good, I think there was maybe a little more queuing at certain intersections, but the actual grading and flow of the intersections, the grading was good. That said, it's a question of whether or not the funding is at risk, I still think it's a good project, but I don't think it's so good that it would be worth delaying several years, and I did get a similar answer from speaking to SEMCOG representatives, they didn't say 2028, they said 27 is when they're starting to add new projects for approval, like in the tip, kind of queue, like waiting list, so that sounds about right.
And speaking with the Macomb County Federal Aid Committee this morning, they said exactly the same thing as SEMCOG, as far as, it'd be the federal 2027 budget year, which goes into year 28 fiscal year.
Okay, yeah.
Correct. And, and, and Macomb County Federal Aid Committee was in contact with SEMCOG today to discuss the project as well, so that's...
Yeah, and I, I've had several conversations with them, I know they, at, at least that's one consistent piece of information we've all gotten, so...
Right.
Would anyone else like to chime in or speak to this?
One question about something, or comment about something you said, so I guess, this part where I think if we kind of all discuss this together, is if the Federal Highway Administration's telling you scope changes happen all the time, but this email from MDOT, I feel like, and from what you're saying to Ms. Holman, is that they are speaking basically on behalf of the Federal Highway Administration, saying there can't be any scope changes, it seems like we're just not on the same page, and if it is the Federal Highway Administration saying this, I'd like, you know, I'd like it to come from them, not, you know, word of mouth through an MDOT email, you know, especially for a project of this, you know, this size. So, I think, I mean, I think, obviously, it's a tight timeline, but if we can just set up a, you know, phone call, meeting, or something, I think we can hash some of this out before we make a decision, I mean, if it's one way or the other, I just want to make sure we're not making a decision on, you know, like, mixed messages, or, you know, false information, or something like that.
Any other, oh, Mr. Gurley, or councilman?
Yes, thank you, excuse me. Sitting here and listening to the reports from, I call professionals, it sounds to me like we need to make a decision before this meeting's over tonight, or before midnight tonight. Everybody knows my position, that I talked against the highway diet plan since the beginning, and I think that we need to go forward with Phase Two, which would be the five lanes, I think that's what is, and, and I, in respect for Councilman DeMonico, it's very clear that what she read is that we have to have a decision made by the end of the meeting tonight, so phone calls tomorrow or Friday aren't, aren't going to be past the, past the deadline. So let me ask the city manager a question, I'm thinking when I was way back, when I was the mayor, if somebody makes a motion and it passes, they are on the prevailing side, am I right so far?
Yes.
If the person on the, if the person, I'm not on the prevailing side, so I can't make any motions, I just sit here and listen, but if someone wants to make a motion that we're on the prevailing side, three people, somebody would want to make a motion, would they first not have to rescind that motion? And I say the word rescind, because I think that's what Sturgis says, that if you want to make a, a, change a motion from a previous meeting, it would have to be a rescind motion. So they would...
Yeah, it would be a, a motion to rescind the previous vote.
Yes.
And then a motion then to approve...
Right.
Whatever was this new action that the council was discussing.
Right, so one of the three would make a rescinding motion of, of what they want to do, and we bring it to the floor, we vote on it, and if it gets three votes, then you go to the motion that you're talking about, what you really want to do, but I don't think we could do anything until we get that motion off the floor, because I made a motion that it should be five lanes, and that was turned down, and then another motion was made for the two-lane.
That's correct, that's the current direction of the city council, previous action was for the reduced lanes moving forward, yes.
Yeah, and conclusion, I'm just going to say that we're all available counts, counting, and if we counted the number of people that were here that night, February 6th, it was in the high 90s of people who said they didn't want a two-lane highway, and the, most of the emails that were sent to Kim was in the 90s, that they didn't want the change from a five-lane to a two-lane. So, I guess you can, bottom line is, I'm gonna... Can't hear me? You couldn't hear me? My loud mouth? I don't believe it. Anyway, I'm, I'm just going to listen to the people, and maybe if there were not one single person that gave their opinion, I probably still wouldn't like it, but that's it, Mr. Mayor, for now.
All right, would anyone else like to speak to this?
No, I mean, I, I was listening to what you were saying, and I would agree with you, I know there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of things going around, but I would agree that it's not worth risk, risking the loss of the funding. And in a city where we, you know, it's not like we have a, an unending supply of money to just redo every road and, you know, you know, we can just dig in our pockets and say, "Okay, hey, let's do nine mile now, and then let's do this street, that street," so I think that, especially being that this funding covers over 80% of the project, I understand looking ahead and, and, and having ideas and exploring options, but I would agree that, you know, the funding is here, let's utilize what we have, so I would agree with that.
Did you want to speak?
I'd like to ask Randy what we have set aside for funding towards the roads, please. I don't know if you have the figure for this particular project?
Not for this particular project, I did pull the numbers of where we'll be at the end of fiscal year 25, based on the current budget, and that assumes all the federal fundings in place. Major streets will be down to $829,000, and local streets will be down to $454,000. We normally run major streets at about a $2 million fund balance, so it would be a lot lower than it has been, local streets, you know, that kind of fluctuates, but there's not a whole lot of money left after all these projects, and that, again, assumes we keep the federal funding.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I do have another quick question, too, I think it would probably be with respect to Ryan, you said that if you were to, if things were to change from three to five, you would have to tweak the plan again, or would that plan, I'm a little confused, that plan's already been approved prior, so why wouldn't it go through again? Why would it have to be tweaked?
It's, it's basically the same plan that would be going through, and the tweaks that are being made are just based upon, again, issues that have come up in the last few months, as far as trying to get additional stormwater management incorporated into the project, as we're getting grants to do that type of work, changes with the sidewalk, again, in the DDA district, but really, other than that, there's not a whole lot that's going to be tweaked, it's still going to be a five-lane cross-section throughout the entire, through that entire phase, if you, if that's how you choose to proceed.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, if I'm right, when I was talking to the city attorney about somebody has to make a motion to rescind, and I can't do it because I was not on prevailing side, this is my question to the three, the mayor and the two council, make the motion, one of you make the motion to rescind, and let's get on with it.
Is it a question?
It's a, it's a request more than a question, I, I'm not saying, "Will you do it?", I'm saying, "Please do it."
Um, I'm, I'm getting there, I'll be willing to in just a moment, I, I, I mean, honestly, I've been discussing this a lot with, you know, several people, and I thought we needed to have the discussion here today to deliberate openly, because I, I really didn't know what direction I was going in. The other thing that I wanted to mention, at least last thing, I don't believe that Mr. Kern has sat on this project or delayed it at this point, but I, I reached out to him last week to say, "How did that last GI meeting go?", or something, because we were going to have that. Yeah, I was surprised to find out that MDOT had gotten our submission of documents on February 12th, and then did not do anything with them.
Correct, and I had said earlier that day I had followed up with MDOT, because we hadn't heard back from them on the GI meeting, because for the schedule and for the discussions we had had with MDOT, when we submitted the plans back on February 12th or 13th, that we would be having that GI meeting in the middle of March, so because we hadn't heard from MDOT yet, I reached out to MDOT last Wednesday to find out what the status was and why we hadn't heard anything back, and then trying to get a date scheduled, looking at, you know, hopefully this week to do that, but then that's when the chain of emails started coming in from MDOT, stating that, you know, we had these options, and because of the scope change, that there would have to, the, the obligation would have to be considered, and that, and that's when, that was the first time we had heard.
That they were essentially waiting on...
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct.
The reason I wanted to bring that up is, Mr. DeMonico, I think it would be possible if all the agencies were working together to get the project done, I'm just, I think there's more of a risk real- I think there's more of a risk realizing that. I don't know if MDOT's going to drag their feet again, or if there's going to be more miscommunication between SEMCOG, MDOT, the Highway Administration. Any hiccups, when we started this, we knew it was going to be a tight line, a tight timeline, and any hiccups, we're putting ourselves in a position where it's just really problematic, I think. So, um, this has been a, a fun topic to speak about at every meeting. I know people have very strong feelings about it. I will make a motion to rescind council's prior direction to AEW for phase, for road diet on Phase Two, only speaking about Phase Two, and move that, we ask them to, AEW to prepare a bidable package for the five lanes existing to Tuscany, and submit it to MDOT.
Oh, Mr. City Manager, another question. The fact that I was not on the prevailing side, but can I make a, can I second it?
Yes.
I second.
I've got a question or discussion.
Oh, sure.
So, we've got a little bit of time, I think. So I think nobody, MDOT, SEMCOG, Federal Highway Administration, nobody wants us to lose funding or not do the project, or not do a project, you know, that we, that we would like to do. You don't think that we could set up a couple meetings, say by the end of the week, because I called this MDOT representative on Friday, he answered. I feel like they would be willing to have some sort of discussion before we move forward on, on a motion like that, to try and clear up some of these things that are very confusing. Because to me, right now, I think after, there's at least like two pieces of new information that I've learned just now, is that I feel like in this email from Mr. Doyle, this past Friday, he's basically speaking on behalf of the Federal Highway Administration. If they had no change with this scope, which it sounds like the representative you talked to might not have an issue with the scope, I feel like there's no issue and we could go forward with this. So Federal Highway Administration, to me, right at this moment, is saying we can do it. MDOT's saying we can't. But MDOT's saying we can't because Federal Highway Administration. So if we can clear that up, I think we can go forward with the original project, just as, as we've talked about it already, and not, you know, go back to the, the five-lane plan.
Um, so let me clarify something. Were they, who actually takes the action of de-obligation? Do we, is it MDOT who notifies the Highway Commission? We have decided to-
That is correct. Yes, MDOT would be notifying Federal Highway Administration, yes.
And I'm guessing they wouldn't do it with, they would want action from us, because they're essentially releasing, that's a lot of funding-
Correct.
On behalf of the city.
Yes, correct.
So with no action, would they, would they make that call and say we're releasing the funds?
Yes, they could, even if there was no action by the council tonight, yes. That funding could still go away.
I don't, that, that doesn't seem to make sense to me.
Yeah, I guess my question was, I know they were seeking clarification from, like, that email made it very clear. They wanted action from council, not-
Right.
Would they consider, would they treat inaction as they've decided to de-obligate?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
How, I mean, this, how are you and Ms. Homan saying this right now, and we did not have this information before the meeting? Like, why, I, I don't understand this piece. How, I mean, does MDOT even know we have a council meeting tonight? I mean, like, they don't watch our council meetings, they demand action, right? In the past, you know, need to answer by tomorrow and sorts of things, but that's obviously not how city councils work. So I have no communication at all from MDOT that would say we would lose this funding if we don't act tonight. I can't. I'm not going to vote without having anything in writing in front of me, or any information saying that, other than just learning it word of mouth right now.
And, and I will echo that. It wasn't, it wasn't shared with us that there was some sort of deadline for tonight, but again, for me, regardless of that, I think, knowing the process for the scope that it takes to go get a tip scope change, which I believe at the bare minimum is necessary, regardless of the obligation question, I, I still think we're just, the project's been delayed too much with, with how it's gone. And my worry is, and another thing, I, I did think about trying to ask council to table it for a couple of days or something like that, because I, I want some of those answers. It's been frustrating that we get different information. But I also know Ms. Pachadlik's going to be out of town, and you're not back until April 1st.
Right.
And I wouldn't be willing to table a meeting that far out. I think, I'm upset this, nothing's happened since February 12th. I can't imagine setting it out that far. So that's, I just don't think there's time with the risk. So, any other questions?
Just call for the question.
Do we, well, does anyone else wish to speak to this?
Um, well, just-
I, or, I'm sorry, call for the question. We have to call a roll call on that, don't we? Right now?
I made a motion to call a question.
Yes.
I think, because we're in discussion right now. The mayor's just going around the table to see if any of the council members have any comments.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so we'll just sit here and talk all night, and when we think we're done, I can call for the question.
Well, I'm going to be done, so if you have comments?
Just short, briefly, I mean, just based off of what we got in our agenda packet on Friday, even just with the recommended motion, the background brief, it tells us what our two options are. I've had not reason, I've had no reason to question the honesty and integrity of AEW or our acting city manager. And so to me, if they say that they have had conversations with the entities that are providing the funding, that is good enough for me. So I feel like, you know, we've been presented our options. To me, I took this when I read it as notice of, you have a deadline. It says that they need a bid package by the 26th, which is seven days from today. That told me that today was our deadline. That, that's how I took it. And, but I have no reason to, to question the integrity or honesty of those that have been in meetings trying to give us the information that, that we are looking for. So I'm comfortable with just going on as, as it's been motioned and, you know, not belaboring this any longer.
Can I ask Councilman Baker a question? The 26th date that you're talking about, what are you referring to?
Uh, it says right here, to submit the final bid package no later than March 26, 2024.
Uh, where, what, where does it say that?
Um, right in the recommended motion.
Oh, it's in a, a recommended motion, that's not from MDOT, though?
Well, if administration has been given the direction to, to have this communication with MDOT, then to me, this recommended motion was the feedback from said meetings. That's, that's how I would interpret that.
I guess I do not interpret that. I just assumed we just wanted to do it quickly with that date, because April 26th is the, I thought that's what we were talking about earlier.
Well, yeah, but we-
That's the deadline for the pack.
We've just been notified that the three-lane design does not qualify for the federal funding. So if that was the feedback given on Friday, whether it was an in-person chat, or it was over the phone chat, email, that's the soonest that they got it, and the soonest that they could have given it to us. So I don't want to gamble with it. Nine Mile is terrible, because there's other factors. If we play around with time and we lose this money, Nine Mile is in terrible condition, and it still has to be maintained until something is done. So now we're talking about increasing our spending, maintaining it with concrete or patchwork, just until some decision is made, just to possibly lose the funding, which we don't have to fix the road ourselves. So I feel like the best thing to do is to go forward with the guaranteed money that we have, make the roads good and drivable for everyone, and not, not run the risk.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, maybe I should clarify that, that the, in addition to the timing, it's really the fact that this particular funding right now cannot be used for the three-lane design, because of the fact that they need additional traffic studies and capacity analyses, and then an additional environmental review, which takes several months. So I think in addition to the timeframe is the fact that it was made clear to us that this particular pot of money, because of the change in scope, cannot be used for the, for a three-lane design.
No, and I, I understood that. I, I don't know if it was necessarily related to all the steps and the studies, but when, because if it's the past fiscal year, once it's de-obligated, it can't be re-obligated from the past. So then we're sitting in a situation where we're waiting to see if they would re-obligate current funds of the current fiscal year. Again, I think, I think this whole thing came down to the question of de-obligation. Personally, that was my understanding of it. If that was not an issue, I think this, there would not be any problems with this.
And I've got one more comment then, Mr. Mayor. I, in response to Councilman Baker about, wasn't questioning the integrity of Ms. Homan and Mr. Kern about the date where we had a deadline today, that information was just left out. Council was never given that information, that we had to make a decision by the end of tonight. And I just wanted to make that clear, that that is the case. We did not have that information.
No, and just for clarity, I didn't say that you did. Maybe it's just my wording. I'm saying my perspective is, that if they tell me this is the feedback that we've gotten, then that's how I, that's how I give it consideration. I won't question their integrity or their honesty with it. I never said, Councilman DeMonaco, that you did. So if I imply that, that was not my intention.
So then, so I, so I know who, who said that, then, that it was due by the end of tonight?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
You and I had a conversation during the week, where we discussed the fact that things were moving ahead. We, we didn't know what the delay was, or where the confusion was. Clearly, a lot of cooks in the kitchen. But we had a conversation that the decision by council was clearly for the three-lane, and that unless there was a substantial change to any aspects of the project, that it was not something that needed to be addressed by council. And so the only reason this motion was even put on the agenda at the last minute on Friday, as you know, our deadline is Thursday, was only, was put on was because of the fact this is the information that was given to us by MDOT. They were aware that we had a meeting tonight. We asked, you know, we said we're meeting every two weeks, and, and no, they needed a decision. And that, that is why it is on the agenda.
And I, you know, when I saw it, I did think to myself, you know, I don't know if administration should be adding this to the agenda, but I know that, given the nature of the email, I, I understood why. Ms. Pachadlik?
I have one more quick thing to ask. I was looking at the email with respect, the email that we received from MDOT. It said additionally, although a formal capacity analysis and traffic study have not been submitted, the capacity data previously provided to MDOT via email does not appear to meet federal guidelines for a lane reduction. When we submit, if we were to submit for a five-lane, I'm not sure if it would be Kim or Ryan who would be answering this, would we be submitting that old study, the 2021 study? And is that going to be a problem with that older study?
That study is not required for the five-lane project. Basically, that study was required because the city was looking at doing a road reduction on a, on a street that has a traffic count greater than 15,000. That's why that study was required as part of the road diet alternative, but that study is not required if the road is being reconstructed in kind.
And did we, did we submit that study with the lane reduction, then?
We did, yeah.
It's a little confusing on this email.
We did. We actually submitted that capacity analysis before we even submitted the plans. That capacity analysis was submitted in mid-January. Basically, we just provided them the data to review, to formalize that report. We just need to provide a written, basically a written summary of the results, and then the report would have to be stamped and signed by an engineer. Their other comment was that because the data was used from tra, or traffic data, traffic data that we had from 2021, they're requesting that if we were to move forward with the three-lane option, that we update that data to current, to the current date.
Okay, thank you.
I just want a quick question about that, too. Follow-up question. What was the, the update, you gave us an update for Pleasant to Kelly, but so why would that not be an updated, you know, that wasn't a report from 2021? Why would that not be considered an updated?
Because we were using traffic counts from 2021.
Okay, okay.
All right. Is there any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Pachadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
No.
All right, motion passes. We will, and, Ms. Homan and Mr. Kern, if you can just maybe email us, keep us updated on the status, so we don't get any more surprises, hopefully.
Yeah, we can definitely do that.
Mr. Mayor, should we, excuse me, should the council make a motion, perhaps Ms. Homan, you can provide some direction to, with regard to the previous action of council with the five-lane? Being that we've rescinded the, the three-lane, the road diet during Phase Two, should there be a motion tonight, just basically directing Mr. Kern to proceed with the, with the five-lane?
Oh, I, I thought that was included in the-
Was it the motion?
Um-
I was writing it down, I guess I didn't.
Yeah, yes, rescind the previous, go with the five lanes, and limited to scope two is the other thing I made clear on that. So, or Phase Two, I'm sorry. All right, moving on.
Sorry, I did have a question then about going forward. Are we, kind of, I guess, question like Mr. Albright, we wouldn't be considering any other traffic calming measures or any, any changes then on the five, I guess, because even Mr. Kern was mentioning, they, they did have some changes. So I guess there are going to be some changes before it's submitted, I guess. Are we, we seeing that, I guess, before then it's submitted? I mean, I would certainly request, as I have throughout the process, that we see these updated drawings then, before they're submitted.
Uh, Mr. Kern, do you want to respond?
We can definitely provide that. We can definitely provide the plans before they're submitted.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to reports from administration, city management report. Ms. Kim Homan?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually only have one or two things. I expected a lot more conversation tonight. I know we still have a lot to go. Not to bring up a sore subject, but to update on Nine Mile and the water mains, if I may. The, the crossings were completed in the eastbound and turning lane, southern lanes were completed. They are now completing, they've just finished, I believe, the crossings in the two westbound lanes. They will be test, starting Thursday, they will be testing those connections to make sure that everything is fine, I believe. Mr. Kern says it'll be about two weeks. At that point, Nine Mile will be fine. The intersection of Grashit and Nine Mile will then become the, the target of construction as they work to attach the main from the Nine Mile side across to the main, the new main that was put in on the west side of Grashit. So there will be some, some lane closures, I believe, during that time, in about two weeks plus.
Anything else? Anything else? Uh, any questions for Ms. Holman? Moving on to finance directors of the board, Mr. Randy Blum.
Yes, Mayor and counsel. Um, the first electronic legal bill email went out on the fourteenth, so if you haven't seen it, please let me know that you did get it. Make sure this thing's working. In the future, you'll get all of the credit card, P-card information as well as the legal bills electronically. Um, and before the meeting, I handed out an update since we have marijuana in the discussion. Uh, the medical marijuana, uh, just an update of where we're at with the money that came in and then how much we have spent, uh, the legal fees, and we have one lawsuit that's still ongoing. Uh, we're currently a little over $1,700 in the hole on that, uh, piece of it. So just something to keep in mind, and that's all I have.
All right. Any questions? City attorneys, we're heard, Mr. Albright.
Thank you, uh, Mayor and members of counsel. Uh, last week, a resident contacted, uh, city administration, um, and this resident had an issue with a decision of the city's building official, and so city administration asked that I reach out to this individual. I did so and, uh, the resident and I discussed, uh, possible resolutions. At first, this resident, uh, wished to appear at a city council meeting to express, uh, frustration that the resident was, um, undergoing, and I explained to the resident that he certainly had a First Amendment right to appear and I did not discourage him from appearing if he wanted to do that. We also discussed, um, him filing, uh, an action with the Construction Board of Appeals seeking an variance. Uh, he indicated that, um, he was not interested in doing that either, and then we also discussed him, uh, presenting, uh, uh, basically a settlement demand to the city, uh, which, uh, he did yesterday, and I have circulated, uh, that to all the council members. Uh, I'm just looking for direction on whether the city council wants to go into a closed session at future meeting to discuss that. I did provide a legal, a written legal opinion to that effect, so we would be permitted to go into a closed session and discuss that, or if the council just instructs me to, uh, deny his request, um, which I can then forward to him. Um, if the council does do that though, and I know I, I indicated this in my, in my email, uh, the Construction Board of Appeals is currently vacant. In fact, I don't know as if, uh, it's ever had any members. That is a, a mayor appointment subject to council approval, and so I would recommend, uh, that we at least, uh, consider, uh, filling that, that board. So in the event this resident or any other residents have an issue with, um, a decision of the building department, uh, this would be an avenue for them, for them, uh, rather than seeking litigation against the city. And then the other item I had, um, I also received, uh, an email today from an attorney who indicated, uh, litigation, uh, had been filed. Um, he had not received the summons back from the circuit court yet, and, uh, he asked if I would accept service, uh, on behalf of the city. I told him that I certainly would do that. Uh, I'm not aware if what this attorney is seeking relief-wise also includes money damages. Um, I can accept the complaint, uh, regardless if it, uh, is seeking money damages, but if it is seeking money damages, then that would be referred over to the MMR, MMR, your attorney, Tim Ferret. With that said, uh, Mayor, I may have any questions?
Okay. First, on the first item, we did appoint many years ago, uh, people to the Construction Board of Appeals. All the terms, I think, yeah, according to our website, are expired, but, uh, we, we did appoint five people to it at one point, so I don't know if they'd still be willing to.
If they are, that'd be wonderful. I don't know as if they ever called a hearing or if it was even necessary, because I don't think anybody filed an application for that, but if those members are still residents, certainly if they're still interested.
Yeah, I don't know enough information about this case yet to direct if we should go into a closed session or not against personal.
Um, and that would be for next meeting, closed session, right?
Yes.
Perhaps at this point, we should just go ahead and ask to put it on virtual session for next meeting.
Um, I'll make the request to Ms. Holman.
Anything else?
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Uh, moving on to new business, approval of the EBIT award for the 2024, 2025 lead water service replacement program. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Yes, I move that we, uh, award the 2024, 2025 lead water service line replacement program bid to the two lowest bidders, Major Contracting Group of Detroit, Michigan, and DeAngelo Brothers Incorporated of Farmington Hills, Michigan, for the unit price stated in their bids received on February 27th, 2024.
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if you allow me to make a comment.
Sure.
About that $10 million that we got to fix the water lines. I want to let you know that it was Senator Kleinfeld that got that $10 million for, uh, bless her heart. I don't, I don't think she was up there even a week and she said, East Point needs $10 million, Governor, and the Governor says, where do I sign? So we, we, keep her in mind, and she also is taking care of the, the high school swimming pool that has lain dormant for so long, and within a couple of months of her being elected, she's, she's got the money to repair it. So next time you get a flyer from Veronica, pay attention.
Well, thank you. Um, moving on to item B, um, accept the Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity Community Center grant funding, uh, approval of AEW's proposal for professional services and approval of allocation of additional funding for the Kennedy Park splash pad. If, if applicable. Would anyone like to, uh, open this up or want to start off with a motion?
I can make a quick comment at the beginning here, I think, uh, on the, the money, uh, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, we, we're receiving, of course, right, 1.5 million from the state, 300,000 from RARE, and then we budgeted 500,000 in fiscal year 25, 26. Um, if you look at our five-year plan, all of that together, um, would be only 48,730 under budget. We'll say about, because I guess I don't know the exact number from the state, if it's exactly 1.5 million or it's, uh, slightly less or more. Um, the estimate, that's what the two point, uh, well, 2,348,730 estimate by AEW. So basically, I think we are, to, to me, I guess, we're, we're in budget if we just pull that forward two years. Obviously, you know, that affects the next couple of years, but we were already planning on spending 500,000 fiscal year 26. So that is just my comment, I guess, to start the discussion.
Uh, did you have a response? No? Good? Okay. Right, uh, did you need a motion from us for, to actually formal acceptance? Okay. Did anyone want to make a motion?
Sure. Why not, uh, Mr. Mayor? Um, and, and I guess there was one other comment I was going to make. We were way under budget with the demo of the police court building, so I guess that can make up for the extra 48,000 and then we're still, at worst, you know, under budget. Um, so sure, I will motion then that we accept the Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity Community Center grant funding in the amount of 1.5 million dollars to install a splash pad in Kennedy Park, approve the Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick proposal for professional services, approve the allocation of 48,730. Is this, Mr. Blum, the correct amount that I should be saying? Uh, sorry, I'm stopping mid-motion.
I, I would do the full amount of 848,730 with the knowledge that 300,000 is coming from RARE.
Um, let me jump back into the motion here. Sorry, Mr. Albright. Yeah, so move to accept the Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity Community Center grant funding in the amount of 1.5 million to install a splash pad in Kennedy Park, approve the AEW proposal for professional services, approve the allocation of 848,730, assuming we receive 300,000 from RARE. An additional funding for the Kennedy Park splash pad and further authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents, uh, necessary for the above.
Is there support?
Support.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Moving on to item C, uh, fire chief vehicle replacements. Did anyone want to?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I would move to, excuse me, lease of a 2024 Chevy Silverado pickup truck to Enterprise Fleet Management for the fire department.
Is there support?
Support.
Any, uh, comments? Please call the roll.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Uh, so the, if, if we're do, um, the lease is the 955 dollars a month? If we're doing the lease? I just want to make sure I'm following this.
Is that correct, Mr. Blum?
Um, how many miles per year do we generally put on this? I tried finding it. I thought it was sent to us before, but I could not, uh, find. Sure, but how much do we actually?
Yeah, I don't have that schedule in front of me of what the fire chief vehicle was. Um, it's, the lease is based on 75,000 miles over the five years, uh, so it's 15,000 miles a year. Trying to remember what my schedule showed on that particular vehicle. I mean, it's just, it's not coming to me right now.
Okay, so I think it's 50,000 over four, five years? I guess I'm just asking, because some of these cars, you know, we, of course, had the lengthy conversations when we first started with Enterprise about the, um, police patrol cars. They're heavily, heavily used, of course, used all day long. Some of the cars make more sense, I think, to, to buy than to lease, you know, like we talked about that with the code enforcement cars too. So I guess I'm just, I'd rather buy it than lease it, I guess, long story short.
All right. I think I'm at this point okay with going forward with the lease, um, although I do want to revisit some of our policies with some of our leased vehicles. Does anyone else have discussion, uh, further discussion on this? All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
No.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to, um, item D, approval and purchase of 18 Flock cameras to be positioned around the city of East Point. Um, on this one, uh, Chief Haynes, could I ask you to maybe open it up?
Sure. So what the police department is asking for is, um, 18 Flock cameras that would be placed around the city. What a Flock camera is, is it takes recordings of license plates on vehicles and runs them through the law enforcement information network, um, as well as a national crime index computer, and it immediately sends information to a police car if a vehicle is a wanted vehicle, say in like a homicide, um, an armed robbery, or if the vehicle is wanted because it's stolen. Um, it would send that information, but more importantly, it's an investigative tool. Um, all of the cities surrounding us now have, have, are putting them in, um, and it helps us solve crimes by capturing license plate data, holding it for about 30 days, so that if we know of a vehicle that was used in some type of crime, we can enter that information and hopefully find the matching vehicle and then get a, get a license plate number. So there's a lot of investigative use for it, and currently, part of the problem is we have an agreement with Flock, um, that will end across the nation on April 1st. So if we do not install Flock cameras, um, we will lose our investigative tool of having that to operate with as of April 1st, um, which would be a really difficult thing for our detective bureau since they rely on this information quite heavily. And further than that, um, like I said, the neighboring jurisdictions have put them in, but we're still lacking a lot of areas within our city, you know, where crimes have been committed and we would have that information available to us.
Thank you. Uh, would anyone like to, well, first, would anyone like to open it with a motion?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Question number one popped up in my head while you were speaking. Is it possible or worthwhile to put one of those at an intersection that, in a residential area that has been known for speeders that go through, or would that even?
No.
Work?
Well, it, I mean, it would take license plates, but it wouldn't do anything for speed, and Michigan has, um, a law in the books that says that those cameras cannot be used.
Okay.
Capturing of that data information for speeding or any, any otherwise enforcement of traffic laws.
Okay.
Um, further, what I didn't mention first is that we do have a grant that is sitting out there for, um, the majority of the cost of year one. Um, I was, I, I went to school to be a police officer and not a mathematician, so I do have a wrong number that is on the face page, um, of the budget, and where I have the first year if, and this is part of the other problem, is the grant is a couple of years old and we have not been able to use that funding. It has been asked multiple times to change the funding. We've gotten three approvals from the state, but we need a fourth approval. Um, so we're waiting on that. We don't see any reason why it wouldn't be indicated or, or given to us to use for this purpose. That grant is $66,000.
Wow.
Um, and that would cover, like you said, all but, um, in the paperwork I presented was 3,400, but it's actually 4,600 that we would have to expend out of our budget for year one.
Great. Uh, one more comment, Mr. Mayor. If not, if none of you ever witnessed having that, uh, when I was out to San Francisco several years ago, I went out with my son-in-law. He went through the traffic and all we seen was a huge, a big bright light, poof! And he says, well, Harvey, I just got a ticket, so they were, and they, and you know, you, you know, when that bulb goes off, you know, you, you know, you've gotten caught, so I'm excited. That's gonna, that's gonna be great. We're gonna surprise a lot of people.
All right. Uh, would anyone like to make a motion?
I had a question too from, uh, Mr. Haynes comments. Um, you said we, we access Flock's data already, or what were you, you said something?
Yes. So right now, um, we're able to access Flock data, not obviously for the city of East Point, but for our neighboring jurisdictions, in fact, all across the state and, um, pretty much all across the United States as far as Florida and California, we can access data from those, but we don't have our own data.
Okay.
I have a quick question. And, and then the recurring annual, recurring costs are 66,000, is that right? 56,000?
The annual recurring cost for the 18 is 56,500.
Uh, and Mr. Blum, I guess I'll ask you, do you have any input on, on that recurring cost or concerns?
Uh, no, the recurring cost is already in the fiscal year 25 budget.
What did we, or which line item was it, or? I don't remember talking about this.
I, I don't recall what, where you put it. It's there.
I don't recall which GL number it was either.
Well, in, in the fiscal year 25 budget, you haven't received that yet. It's not in the fiscal year 24, because we're using grant money for year one.
Oh, well, so it's not in the budget?
It's not in the current budget, that is correct, but the recurring cost will be in the next budget, which will be presented at the next meeting.
Uh, and I guess let me ask this with the recurring costs, um, how long do our agreements last with, if, if we ever came up on hard times and had concerns about that recurring costs?
Uh, this agreement is a three-year agreement.
Okay. Okay. All right, any other questions? Does anyone want to make a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second.
And that's for the recommended motion?
Yes.
Is that adequate, the star right? Just want to double check.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Mayor, then. I, well, I, I'm against this sort of thing in general. I feel like it's too much surveillance on citizens. You know, we'd be taking, well, it's at what, 18 different intersections? Basically, anytime you leave or come to the city, we'd be keeping track of that. Of course, you know, there's the 30 days where the data goes away and all that. But I think just from a personal standpoint, I'm not a huge fan of that. And this company's had its fair share of controversy. They're banned in two states because they've put up cameras without permission from the Departments of Transportation. And yeah, it's another 56,000 a year in our budget for the police department. So, I guess that's basically my comments.
And I would just say, my, this almost reminds me of like Green Light in Detroit or something like that, where it's something in a public space that's monitoring the surrounding area. And I know just my personal work experience that goes a long way with criminal activity. I will note that during the State of the City today, Judge Galen commented on the amount of violent crimes that we've had over the past year. For me, I think this is a useful tool that would be a good thing to add in the city, so. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
No.
Moving on to item E, adoption of resolution 24-1973, depositing or investing public funds. Deputy Treasurer as authorized official. Would anyone like to make a motion on this?
Yes, I would move that we adopt resolution number 24-1973, which designates Deputy Treasurer Kelly Rao as an authorized official to perform all the duties involved with depositing or investing public funds.
Is there support?
Support.
Does anyone have any comments? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Moving on to item F, adoption of resolution 24-1974, adding Deputy Treasurer as authorized, check sign him. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Yes, I move that we adopt resolution number 24-1974, adding Kelly Rao signature as Deputy Treasurer effective March 19th, 2024, to all current and future city financial institutions.
Support.
Any discussion?
Yeah, there's, I think there's a typo. The resolution actually says 23-1974, and I think I noticed it on the page before. It just needs to be corrected. On the actual resolution.
Oh, yep.
On both of those resolutions, it should be 24-1973, 24-1974. It was said correctly in the motion, but the resolution itself just has a typo.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember, Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Moving on to item G, approval of recommendation of Planning Commission to revoke the special land use for 24611 Grashit and reimburse the PILL. Did you want to? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the recommendation of the Planning Commission to revoke the special land use for 24611 Grashit. And further authorize a reimbursement of a payment in lieu of landscaping in the amount of $2,500 payment, less any expenses owed to the city of East Point.
I'll second.
All right, would anyone like to comment on this? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Moving on to item H, removal of member from the DDA.
I remove, I move that we remove the named member from the Downtown Development Authority Board.
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
All right, moving on to discussion and possible motions to approve the submission of grant applications to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources. I'm sorry?
No, I said after you.
Oh, no, would anyone like to open up with any comments on this?
Well, I was just listening when Mr. McCain presented, and I noted that we had recommendations from the Parks Commission. And I would, would like to move in the direction with their recommendations, just knowing the work that they put in and how they engage with the community and their research for projects. And I know it's respective to each grant, but I would like to move forward with that. I just believe that we should take their recommendation, go forward that way.
The projects that they recommended, I'm trying to find my page here. Mr. McCain, would you be able to comment on how much the match is or how much should be required on the projects that they were?
Yeah, so, all of the projects would require, well, I should say the one for Spindler and Kennedy would be 50% match. And the project for Shamrock would be a 25% match. The Kennedy, and that would be for, we would have to provide either additional grant funding or general fund revenue for those projects. The one exception would be option two of Kennedy Park, which would complement the funding we've already received from RARE and Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity for the Splash Pad.
Well, I'm sorry. I do know that the Parks Commission is also in favor of the Splash Pad and heavily supports it. So, if we need to go with that choice, if it's a better economic decision, I'm also happy to do so.
Mr. McCain, when did you need a decision on? I guess you want us to pick out which options to go with, right?
That's correct, Mayor. The applications for these three grants are debatable first. So, we were hoping to, working on completing them through the end of this weekend, early next week, to get everything together for an early submission. And we'd be working closely, of course, with AEW to make any revisions that the council votes on tonight. But if we're good with the, you know, the options presented, then it would mostly be working on the narrative and getting a few other documents and pieces together in order to support it for submission.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
Because I know that there's matching funds, so I, so there's three different parks. Each has an option, and then, of course, it's up to council as to whether all three, one of the three, two of the three, and/or prioritizing in which order. If that makes it easier or harder, I'm sorry.
No, I, so I'm aware of that. I was trying to find, not the percentages, but the amounts that those projects would end up requiring. Mr. Blum, did you look at these at all? I don't, I know this wasn't really a finance.
No. I have not. I was actually just flipping back to the public hearing to see if I could find some numbers. There does appear to be some pricing information.
So, can I add in while you're looking? Yeah, the CIP in the budget, we've got 125,000 for lighting and tennis courts this fiscal year and 110,000 for basketball courts under parks. So, I guess we've, that's at least one number I think that's relevant here. We've got 235,000 budgeted between this year and next year. And then, I guess, whatever numbers you come up with here, Mr. Blum. I guess like, is A, it says it's 705,000. You said it's a 50% match, so that's like 358,500, something like that. For the first one, then, option A, that would be our, we'd be responsible for?
Right. Yeah, it does appear that's A, and then, B, B is 1,388. So, half of that you're talking is 1,656,900. Just shy of 700,000, B.
Shamrock's 215, right? So, then 25% of that?
215 and first one and 310 on the second one.
Is A the Parks Commission recommendation, Councilman Baker? It didn't say.
For which one, for Shamrock? He mentioned that A was their recommendation.
Okay. That's like 52.5% B, or 54,000?
Yes, I would suggest at least going forward with A. I think B's too costly for, that was my concern when going over these projects. And, Mr. McCain, I can't see you, so if you ever want to chime in, just raise your hand to respond to any of that.
Or Shamrock, Mr. Mayor, you're saying?
Yes.
You said option A for Shamrock.
And, Mr. McCain, though, you want, you're looking probably for multiple projects? Or do you just want us to designate one as a priority?
Yeah, we would prefer you would designate either option A or B for each of the three projects you're out.
Yeah, the numbers we just went over would be like 1.1 million for the three option As would be our required, the 50%, 50%, 25% for the three. We have 235 budgeted.
What would that number be? I know it was mentioned that for Kennedy Park, option B would go in conjunction with what we have going on, so.
Okay.
I mean, I'd be, I think that would be good if that would save us some, some money.
I also think that would be agreeable with everybody.
Actually, where, I only see one Kennedy Park pricing sheet.
I didn't realize that we needed to make the, I know we have the public hearing today. The deadline, you said it was what day?
April 1st.
April 1st. Would it be possible? I feel like I'd want to look at the numbers first, rather than sit up here and try to do it last minute. And maybe come back and give direction. What does council feel about that?
We have, will we have the call of special meeting for that? Is that what you want?
I think so, and I wouldn't mind doing that.
I mean, I'm comfortable, you know, going, I mean, looking for more information, that way you can make.
I just, I feel like we're kind of like going through trying to figure out what the numbers are.
No, I have no objection to that.
I'd like to make a clear motion. And I would be fine with coming back, really anytime this week, after 5 o'clock, maybe even center early so that it's not a night that, the time that administration has to stay late. How does other, how does everyone else feel about that?
Sounds good. Either. It's, I guess depending on the time of day, I could have Wednesday, Thursday open. Friday evening would be better for me, but I know administration wouldn't be here for Friday evening, so. But also, I don't, I don't know that. I mean, if you, if the majority of council could do it early in the day Friday and I couldn't make it just because of work, then, you know, so be it.
I'd like to, oh, I'm sorry.
I know that this Thursday typically there would be a zoning board appeals meeting scheduled due to lack of agenda items. Thursday evening is actually open, there isn't any, anything here, 7 o'clock on Thursday. I don't know how that works with everyone else's schedules, but there isn't, there typically would be a ZDA meeting, but there isn't this week.
Mayor? Sorry, I, this, I don't need to contradict Mr. Albright's statement, but we do have Kelly Grove Complete Streets Corridor Planning and Engagement Session on Thursday evening.
What time is that?
5:30 to 7:30.
If I may, Ian, this would be, if the council could make it at 5 o'clock, this would be a priority.
Okay.
I would suggest, thank you, coming back on Thursday at 5 o'clock if council's okay with that. I know, Ms. Shadlick, you're going to be on vacation. At 5 o'clock? Yes. Okay. Okay, I will, well, I'll make a motion to call a special meeting for 5 o'clock on Thursday at City Hall to address this one agenda item. And I suppose I'll include in that motion table this agenda item to that meeting.
I'll support that.
All right, any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
And Mayor and Council, we will get you the, those dollar amounts tomorrow morning as we post the notes for the special meeting.
Thank you. And moving on to item J, discussion on adult use marijuana. Would anyone like to open up this topic?
I had requested that it be placed on the agenda. So, in an effort to bring additional businesses, not that I want to discourage the businesses who are currently here, I had thought we should discuss bringing in recreational marijuana. I know at a planning commission meeting that I recently attended this past month, there were three businesses that were approved for medical marijuana. So, those have already been approved by the planning commission. And I just thought, there's really no, obviously, there's no need for them to open up with medical marijuana. They would actually make more money with recreational marijuana. So, that's why I wanted to bring this up on the agenda because I think that it could be beneficial, of course, to our community and our city. Financially, it could be beneficial. I do know that other communities have opened recreational. I work in a city, downtown Mount Clemens, and they have facilities down there that are beneficial. And I think it's a good idea to, you know, bring in some recreational marijuana facilities for our community. That's just my thought. I know even like, my daughter lives out in a small community, and they literally have a Dollar General, a party store, an ice cream shop, three bars, and a recreational marijuana facility. No joke, it's the truth. And, I mean, it hasn't increased the crime or anything like that, and it's, it's basically run like a party store. You know, it's licensed and regulated, and they can be beneficial. Communities like Utica have even utilized funding from recreational marijuana facilities where they've enhanced their parks. They've received donations from those businesses. And I just thought it might be an opportunity for us, especially when you drive around the city and you look at the businesses who are here. And I do appreciate those businesses. I hope no one takes it incorrectly on that. Very supportive of our local businesses. But we, we need to bring business in. I mean, there's a lot of vacancies. I mean, there's a lot of vacancies, you know? You and I walked Nine Mile and you, you know, I mean, you know, there's a lot of vacancies. So it was just a thought to bring to the table to discuss, so that's my view.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Uh, okay. How do I say this without you thinking I'm, I'm greedy? But I am greedy, because with the medical marijuana, the city doesn't get anything, except maybe how, a business tax. But with recreational marijuana, uh, the cities, municipalities do get money. I looked up the list of how many cities are getting their money this, this week or next week, and, uh, comes about two hundred and sixty-nine different areas. Uh, we will be receiving approximately sixty thousand dollars per building. So if we're looking at three, that, figure it out, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh, also being greedy and interested in the parks, I would tell the council, if this, if this passes, I will argue with the administration that I think all the money should be earmarked for, uh, for the parks. There are some parks that have nothing, except, except grass, and that's ridiculous. That's terrible, that they should have something like that. One of the questions, I, I guess I asked the city attorney, would we have to go out for bids? Answer is no. If this passes, if the paperwork done, we could vote to give, if one, each of those three, um, passes for recreational, to each of the three who already have licenses here for, um, recreational marijuana. So I think we should go ahead with it. Uh, it's, it's something exciting, but exciting for me, because I like money for the, I like money for the parks.
Ms., uh, Councilman Baker?
Uh, I would, uh, respectfully disagree that we could grandfather in companies, uh, the, the companies that already have been approved for the medical. The process that we follow was only for medical. It wasn't for recreational, and I believe that doing so, you might as well open up a window, put a fan on your money, and send it out, because there were, there, there will be other people who will come forward who feel like they did not get a fair chance to try to go for recreational. Now, this is coming from me, I don't, I've, I've never voted in favor of the marijuana businesses coming into the city. But if you move forward this, and if you grandfather in the companies that have already been awarded for medical, I think that you are now asking yourself, or asking the city to be sued. This is a question that I've asked about, because I've heard this topic come up several times over the years, and just to be informed of what would happen if it went forward like that. And the consistent answer was that we would definitely get sued. I would respectfully disagree that it's just a, we'll make all this money and then there are no ramifications. Even with the medical, we've already received information of being in the hole, and that was people getting approved through the process, um, for medical marijuana. Being that there is so much more money in recreational, I think that you are asking for trouble if you do it in that fashion. That's my two cents.
Uh, Mr. Albright?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just had some comments, uh, because I knew this was going to be on, uh, this evening's agenda, obviously, and, um, I just wanted to, I have some statistics as well that I'd like to share. Um, the first question is, is there a consensus on this council to allow adult use? That's the number of questions. If there is not, uh, then it becomes a moot point, because the city has already previously passed a resolution opting out, okay? If there is, uh, interest in, or possibly a maybe, I would like to, uh, share some statistics. Uh, adult use, uh, was passed by the voters in, uh, 2018, and the statutory framework was put in place by the state of Michigan, uh, in 2019. That act is known as the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, uh, the acronym is MRTMA. Uh, over the past twelve months, uh, medical marijuana sales in the state of Michigan have decreased, uh, by seventy-six point two percent. Uh, that was, uh, in accordance with the Michigan Medical Marijuana Facility Licensing Act, uh, which, uh, medical marijuana was, uh, was passed by the voters back in, uh, two thousand and eight. Over last year's period, uh, adult use marijuana sales have increased thirty-two point eight percent. And in 2023, uh, Michigan saw, uh, two hundred and sixty-seven point seven million in adult use overall sales across the entire state of Michigan. Uh, in 2023, that same period, uh, saw a three point two million, uh, dollars in sales in medical marijuana overall sales. As of February 2023, uh, eighty-one cities, twenty-six villages, and sixty-four counties received fifty-one thousand eight hundred dollars for every adult use retailer in their community. Under the medical marijuana statutory framework, uh, they're referred to as provisioning centers. Uh, if the city would, uh, pass an adult use, um, ordinance, then those same types of facilities, rather than a provisioning center, they're known as retailers, so the, the language has changed somewhat. Um, I've looked at the ordinances of several communities, and, um, Ann Arbor, for instance, uh, who has passed full medical marijuana and adult use, uh, they have twenty-seven retailers, and they received four million dollars approximately for all of their retailers. Now, granted, it's a larger geographic area, twenty-seven retailers, but just to give you an idea of what they did receive. Uh, I also looked at what the cutoff is for if a city does have or goes in the direction of adult use, uh, they're eligible then for the allocations of funds. Uh, the cutoff each year is September thirtieth, so a retailer would need to be open by September twenty-ninth in order to be, for the city or municipality to be eligible for those allocations, uh, by the state. Presently, the, the city of East Point allows three provisioning centers, along with some other, uh, licenses too, that when we went through this application process, there were no other applicants for any of those other ones, just the provisioning centers. If adult use is permitted, it allows, uh, certain types of permits. Those include growers, depending on the number of plants, uh, marijuana microbusinesses, and of course, uh, retailers. The procedure, if the council is interested in doing that, would be to opt-in by passing a resolution, and would, the city would need to create an ordinance. Uh, then the question becomes, okay, how many, what kind and how many licenses are we going to allow? Are we going to expand, uh, the current three provisioning centers to allow for more, to also improve retails, so we can allow four, five, six, or more? Or does the city just want to stick with the current three? Um, again, this would, uh, create a new ordinance with a selection process. Uh, our neighboring community, Roseville, just did this when they passed, uh, an adult use ordinance that happened in 2022. I do have a copy of the ordinance in case anybody wants to see that. Uh, it took this, that city fifteen months in order to, uh, appoint, uh, six different permits for all the applicants out of, I think they had forty-seven applications, so it took them about fifteen months to go through that. Ann Arbor has decided to do something a little different. What they have done is they give preferential treatment for their existing medical marijuana provisioning, uh, licenses, and they have not been sued yet, okay? I know that some other communities have also gone that route. So they, they see that as that the medical marijuana vetting process weeded out the people that weren't serious or unqualified, and so that's what the city could do. City could either go through a full application process again, or they could go for a simpler process and just give preferential treatment to the additional three that want.
Um, so related to that, I wanted to be clear, I'm understanding. Um, have you seen any cities that, rather than really creating license, uh, granting licenses and creating a process, just expanded the definition of their existing licenses? I mean, is that even a, a possibility, or do we really need to rewrite as this is really a new, different license?
No, the, the, if the city wanted to go that route, the simpler process and give, um, the current three medical marijuana provisioning licenses, uh, first dibs essentially, then it's a very simple ordinance amount, you go through and you adjust the language.
All right, does anyone else have, uh, comments that they would like to make?
We've already been sued. Just saying, I'm, if you guys proceed with moving forward, I would just advise caution, you've already been sued. So that's, that's all.
I have a comment.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I was going to comment about that too. Unfortunately, Rob, that's the nature of the game here. People will sue over everything, and we've seen that. So, I mean, there's nothing that we can do, um, absolutely, listening to our, um, city attorney, um, you know, to avoid lawsuits. They're, they're inevitable in this position, and, you know, people like to sue cities, they just do.
So I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, exercise caution, learn from history, that's all I'm advising. You guys do what you want to do. I already know what my, my position on it is anyway. I'm just exercising a word of caution, but that's up to you, you guys to choose to follow it or not.
Uh, to be clear, is your position just regarding the initial licenses, or?
I'm saying if.
That's what I thought you were specifically talking about.
The, the talk was about possibly grandfathering in or allowing those who have been awarded the medical licenses to be able to do recreational. We've already been sued just for the medical process. Uh, I believe the same thing will happen if you do the same, if you follow that process for recreational. It's my belief, but I could, I could be wrong.
Okay, I, well, the reason I ask is, do you have a position on, you would be against, you were speaking to grandfathering, like, of, of licenses?
Yes, I, I've never voted yes for marijuana to come into the city. Um, you know, I served on a commission for several years that was about substance abuse prevention. There's a lot of things that I've learned, I've learned, you know, um, in regards to kids, families, whoever else is. Um, in regards to just drug use, drug of choice, what's prevalent in the city, what's prevalent around the schools, so I never could vote in favor of it anyway. I don't knock anybody who chooses to use, I don't tell grown people what to do. That's never my position, but I can't vote yes for it, knowing those things and knowing that, those factors, and it would contradict what I've stood for for so many years, so.
Okay. Um, so, uh, my position is, I, I, I think we should look at it. Um, I think the, um, setup that you described with preferential treatment or, or essentially, uh, you know, I don't know, streamlined process for existing licenses makes sense. Uh, I don't know that I would want to expand the number beyond three, that maybe that's a discussion we have when we have the ordinance in front of us. Uh, my position is, I mean, as, Ms. Councilman Curly said, uh, about being greedy, um, it certainly is a nice idea that we might get fifty grand plus per building or something like that, but I, I think for me, the, uh, more concerning issue is, um, the existing facilities don't, I don't think they're likely to open up, because I don't think those, that paradigm or that business model succeeds anymore underneath the medical. Um, and I'm more looking at the vacant buildings and, and, uh, uh, we've gotten through a lot of process to try to get those buildings open, which would include major, um, capital improvements to them, and I, I'd like to see that eventually come to fruition. Um, because we do have a lot of vacant buildings, we need to, we need to address our vacant business space, so I would ask, uh, our city attorney to go ahead and go forward with preparing, um, whatever would need to be put on the agenda for that. Today is just a discussion, as I understand it.
Was there, was there anything else that any of the other council members would be looking at heading in that direction? So leaving it at the three, what about expanding into any other of the, um, types of permits?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I would just give my opinion too. I, I would, uh, I would settle for three, um, licenses, and those three licenses would be awarded, if you want to use that word, to the three existing companies that were branded the medical marijuana. No, I don't want to go off for any, any other number than the three, and I think we should have automatically, as you said, we could, uh, no bidding, just award those three to the existing winners of the, uh, the medical marijuana license.
That's how it would work, assuming the three want to also sell retail at their establishments? I don't know this for a fact, but assuming they all want to do that, then this becomes a moot point, but there may be one that does not want to do that for whatever reason, therefore, the city then would have to go through the select, the previous selection process through a board to award that or fill that, uh, that third permit.
But my guess is that. I don't see that, yeah.
My guess is that all of them are going to want to take that opportunity to sell retail.
Um, and I, I think to your question, to be clear, I was only speaking about the retail, and in terms of the other licenses, I, I don't think we need to make any changes.
I'd like to see this on our next agenda, you know? Would you be able to get that finished by then?
Uh, I'll do my best.
Uh, let me, let me re.
It is more than three, right?
Let me rephrase that. I would be very happy if our city attorney came to our next council meeting, prepared to present any information he needs to, so we can vote on it.
Very well, thank you.
All right, uh, any other comments on that?
Well, yeah, I didn't make a comment, just wanted to comment on how I feel about it. Um, I'd be interested in looking at revising the ordinance to recreational, and I think, yeah, my initial thought would be to stick with three provisioning centers, um, and then I'd like to learn more information about how this grandfathering sort of idea would work, and just, uh, understand that better. Where I'm at.
All right, moving on to, uh, payrolls and bills, would anyone like to make a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I move that we pay the bills in the amount of three million, eighty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty cents.
Is there support?
Second that.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
All right, moving on to the second hearing of the public, the second hearing of the public is now open, would anyone wish to be heard? Mr. Lamo?
So Mad Lord. Mike Lamo, City of East Point. Mr. Cardy, you better listen, because this is for you. This three deal that you want to do in three, in phase three, you're going to get the same answer. Look at Form sixteen twenty-nine of MDOT, which is an in-house paper that takes all of the little articles as to whether or not you meet. In that paper, and with the diagram that goes with it, you don't, and you can't change your traffic down there, because you've got all of those buildings down there. And Mr. Kleinfeld, you and your mom could have seen that letter when you were up there talking, possibly, Form sixteen twenty-nine. My next thing is, I'm, parking in the new, in the five lane, put the parking back. This is a commercial area, not a playground area. Put the parking back. Final thing, point of legislation, when a council member misses a meeting, and then has somebody, he calls in to text to somebody to get him raised as present, and doesn't attend the meeting, and the meeting was February twentieth, Mr. Cardy, you were not here, you never showed up. So you should be marked as absent, not as present. Please change that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, would anyone else wish to be heard?
Yes, Cindy Fetterly, East Point resident. Um, I have a couple of question, or comments about the Parks, um, public hearing today. I didn't have time to read everything that Mr. McCain put together. Um, we had hearings before where the Parks Commission did not want a basketball court put next to the tennis courts at Spindler Park, because tennis is a quieter game, and having basketballs would be disruptive to the tennis players and teams, so I'm surprised that that was put in there. The other thing is at Shamrock Park, there's no parking lot, so why are we putting in two soccer fields? So, why are we putting in two soccer fields where the parents can't park easily? And what soccer teams are going to be using those fields? I don't see that being necessary to have two soccer fields put there. So, I'd like you to look at that when you're making your decisions on Thursday night. The other thing is, the flock cameras, I think, are a great idea. They're not only used for criminal activity, but amber alerts and things. I think it's positive for our city to have that available. If you're not driving a car that committed a crime, or is being looked at by police, you shouldn't care if anybody knows where your cars at. That's my comments.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to be heard?
Larry Edwards, East Point residence. I would just like to address some, in regard to the email that was put out Friday. And I would advise all citizens or residents to pull it up, or at least look at it. But my concern in regard to that, one of my concerns, that was on February the 20th, says MDOT met with Mayor Kleinfeld and Senator Kleinfeld. So, I'm thinking in my mind, how did Senator Kleinfeld become a part of council, and to be, have input on what have you, other than a residence, but to go and make a decision that, and to be involved in something to this magnitude, as being involved with it firsthand to this order? I mean, I would, I could do that then, and what have you. Just let me know, and what have you. So, that's not making any sense to me, other than it's not, it's not right. Then, we look at Mr. DeMonico, on his last meeting at the council's closing, he made a statement in regard to, we need to make, we make our best judgment. And that's what I'm afraid of. DeMonico been on the seat for 14 years, and I've been afraid of his decisions that he make each and every time. And tonight is a perfect example of another one. And the list just goes on and on and on anyway. And I think with this project, this Nine Mile situation, that most people have woke up and have really come to see, some, most, some of us already knew who his character was. But then, I think, most of the residents now have seen who this guy really is, and has been the problem from, for 14 years, and what have you. And to Margaret, Councilwoman Margaret, and what have you, I'd like to say, I'll be the first one sued. Somebody out here high on drugs, drunk or whatever, and what have you, you can believe I'm going to sue, and what have you. I'm going for the drug company, I'm going for the city, and anybody else, and what have you. And as far as-
You have 30 seconds?
As far as you, Mr. Curly, and what have you, all money ain't good money. You call yourself a Christian. You need to check what a Christian is.
Thank you.
My name is Ms. Willie Twine. I have voice issues, but I want to speak on marijuana, recreational or medical. It's no good for the city, because it's worse than drinking and driving. Who's to say what they're going to treat that chemical with, when they leave from that facility? Make sure that you put up a rehabilitation center for those that's using it illegally, to rehabilitate them, and make our city a little bit safer, because you're going to build more crime in the city for those who is going to buy this marijuana medically, and then take it home, and treat it with something, and then get in our roads, like he said. You're going to look for suits, because people are not going to be in a right frame of mind with this chemical. Medical, recreational, is still not right.
Thank you.
Mary Hall Raffert, again. Want to commend council for rescinding that prior motion. And I would like for you to continue to consider common sense solutions for the city. Not going to say too much about the marijuana. I think I've already said what I needed to. I just cigarette smoke annoys and frustrates me, so to have to deal with that, and I get headaches and everything else about it. But I realize that people are going to do what they want to do. I guess I'll be staying home a lot more, rather than coming out. That I'm sure that'll make some of you happy, at any rate. Won't have to hear me. But my concern is always concern for the city. I know we need money, but all money, or all paths to money are not necessarily the right path. So, continue to think deeply and clearly about decisions that you're making, and I'll be praying for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. John Bradout, businessman, resident, East Point, Michigan. Thank you for your service. We really appreciate it. And I would like to clarify that I look at you as public servants. Now, you know, so it's not, we don't want you to go hustle money for us. We just want you to serve us. And to know how to serve us, you must ask us how we would like to be served, what we want to eat. You know, don't force feed us stuff that we don't want to eat. I've been here for a marijuana thing before, and other than the Diaball project, it was the biggest gathering we had up here. And most of the people were not for it, you know. So, I mean, I don't care what way the other, but there, but as public service, I see some, you know, maybe even the Nine Mile project might have been, went a little better if, you know, you came to us as servants, rather than, you know, almost like dictators. That's, I don't think that's what we hired you for. And I don't think that's what you mean to do for us. But if you really want to serve us, and be especially, I can't speak for everybody. It's like, I see the new people coming to the East Point, and their taxes are pretty high, compared to what it was before a while. And you got vacant businesses, you know, if, you know, you want to try to do something, you know, might, might look at, maybe not have them so high taxes, they went down before, maybe you could keep them down with the residents that's already here, not have their taxes so high. It might carry some people to come here, but I would say, people come in, they be coming in slow. But I do agree, it's vacancies here, but I don't know. I could, I can get you some businesses here that you probably wouldn't be glad to hear, and, you know, but, yeah, I like the work you're doing. Keep up the good work, but just if you would always remember that, you know, we are here to support you, and as long as you serving us, we will always support you. We won't be on the other side. We don't need to, we will always agree with you, but we ain't going to want to fight with you either, you know, because we shouldn't have to. We are all supporters. We all should be on the same side. So, thank you all for letting me share. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else wish to be heard?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Shirley Peak, I've been a resident here since 1949. I just have one question, because a lot of people have just been tossing this around. What's the reason why these places have not opened up? Were they waiting to think maybe they could get the recreational marijuana with the, with the medical one, and that's why none of them have done anything yet? Just wondering about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Council. Steve Gunn, my son owns the car wash on Nine Mile, there's a wash point down the road. I'm not 100% clear on this, but I believe what you were talking about tonight is, it's going to be five lanes up into Tuscany, and then the phase three is still open for debate going forward. Mr. DeMonico, last time around at the meeting, you brought up that you have to use your best judgment on doing this. It's hard to, you can't, you can't just put it on the ballot and ask 27,000 voters what their opinion is, and so you have to use your best judgment. You heard from a lot of people, and, you know, it's hard to make a decision on something like that. I understand that. I did a little poll of my own at the car wash. It's kind of easy for me to do it. I queried my customers when they came in. I asked them two questions. The first question I asked them was, do you know anything about the road diet? Do you know anything about the five lane and the three lane road? If they said no, they had no idea, end of story. If they said, yeah, they'd been kind of following it in the news, and so then I asked them one more question, very simple, very direct, which do you prefer, three lane road, five lane road? And I had 376 people respond to this. Out of that, I had 16 people that liked the idea of a three lane road. I had 20 people that really didn't have a full opinion, didn't know, weren't sure which way they would go in it. And I had 340 people that wanted, just put the road back the way it was at five lanes. Now, it's an unsignificant, unscientific poll, I understand that. But these are people that drive Nine Mile. They're coming to the car wash. They're customers, they're regular people coming down the road. I didn't solicit them in any way, shape, or form, just ask a simple question. That's just a little bit of information. I don't know if it helps. I don't think it hurts. And I get it, you can't go door to door and ask everybody, but every little bit of information will help you. It's just one more little bit that I had access to, because I've got a business on that road, and I talked to a lot of people. Maybe if I went over to the bakery on Punske Day, I probably could have got about 500 more people, but I really didn't have the time for that. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say. But if phase three is still open to debate, I really think you need to look at that, talk to more people, get more opinions. It's not that hard to do. You can talk to a lot of them, just talk to the business owners, they can get you that information. You've got Facebook pages. I'm sure you have fans and followers on there. That might be a little tainted. So, get out there, talk to more people, and make the right decision. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to be heard?
Hello, everyone. My name is Sheila, I live in East Point. My concern is the recreational marijuana. And no one has to answer this question out loud, but do you personally know people who smoke marijuana for recreation? Are you around people who smoke marijuana for recreation? To me, it is a mind-altering substance. It's going to make you do things, or say things that you normally wouldn't do. Medical marijuana is one thing. I'm not going to say anything against that. But recreation is, I choose to be high, I choose to be altered, and people lose control, and do things that they maybe wouldn't normally do. So, it doesn't smell good either, if you're not a, if you're not a smoker, you're not used to being around smoke, I'll say it that way. That's a very strong smell, and you can just smell it driving down the street. You don't even have to be near anybody like this. You can just, I have smelled it even with the windows up. So, I'm just saying, it alters a person. And then, we've got more crime, we've got police and citizens having more contact with each other. I just think it's something also to consider. And I have children and grandchildren. I don't want them to smoke marijuana. I hope that they don't have sickness or illness on me either, that I would have to, but that's, like I said, that's different. But I don't want them to choose to smoke marijuana. And if it's there, if it's recreation, it's like, the system is saying, okay, you can do this, have fun, enjoy yourself. So, it's just, and then people, they go to the parks, they go to the grocery stores. I mean, you just, you just never know. And then, like someone said, you don't know what people are putting in some of these things, which further increases the level of the things that they might do, that they normally wouldn't do. So, I just think it's something to consider. Do you want your children to? Do you want your grandchildren to? Do you want your husband, your wife, your sister, your brother? Thanksgiving, Christmas, here we all are.
You have 30 seconds?
That's it, I'm done. Thank you all.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to be heard?
Troy Prater, East Point resident, Mr. Mayor, Council. Villing on her comments, when you talk about adult-use marijuana, consider, I don't know exactly what that means. I mean, we have use, which are people smoking it, does that also encompass grow operations? Grow operations stink, and they are a nuisance. I mean, it's fine to make money off marijuana, but, I mean, you can drive down 94 and pass the old Gibraltar Trade Center, which is a big grow operation, I'll call it Pleasant Trees, and you can smell it from the freeway. I really don't want to be living with that in my neighborhood, that stink. So, when you consider that question, please consider what all do you mean by adult use? Is it just sales, or is it more? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else? Seeing none, the second hearing of the public is closed, and we'll move on to mayor and council reports. We'll start with Councilman Baker.
Thank you. Good night, everybody. Thank you for coming out. Thank you for expressing your thoughts and sharing with us your concerns. That's all I got.
All right, Councilman Curly.
Nothing tonight.
Councilman DeMonico. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'll go quick, sorry then. I've got a few comments I wanted to make. One, I guess, first, when we're discussing things up here, again, I know we've talked about it, the council listens while everyone's talking up here, and we're not shrugging, or things like that. And I heard a lot of people in the audience doing that, as we're having discussions, you know, I'd hope that, you know, everybody respects each other, like we try to up here, just going forward. And for the last gentleman, about the marijuana businesses, we wouldn't allow any grow operations. That's the current, the current ordinance does not allow grow operations, it'll only be the dispensaries. Quick, congrats to the fire department on the new fire truck, the new ladder truck, very exciting. If you haven't seen it, drive by the station, well, you might be inside, but, you know, if it's outside, try to catch a glimpse, or knock on the door and say hi to Brian. And then, I wanted to talk about the Michigan Municipal League Conference I just went to. A couple of years ago, we passed a policy that we were supposed to review our training, if we go on training, using the city budget dollars. So, just very briefly, just want to talk about a couple of things. They had one session where they were talking about how the state has efforts, and a specific person, to help increase the population in the state, and try to attract more people to the state. Michigan's not doing as well as other states in attracting more residents, we're kind of staying a little stagnant. It was interesting to kind of hear that. They talked a lot about creating attractive places to live then, because of course, they had a lot of people from a lot of different cities in the state. And it was just kind of interesting to hear that, you know, people, I think mostly, a lot of times these days, don't just move just for a job, they're looking for also a cool place to live, like, place making is a sort of thing. So, it was interesting session to hear about that. I joined one session then, a breakout session with our own labor attorney, Brandon Fornier, not Rich here, but Rich, one of his counterparts here. He helps us out with labor issues. He ran a collective bargaining session, and there's just a lot of bills that passed in the recent legislature about how that changes. So, it was just kind of interesting to try and keep tabs on that, and just understand some of those changes. Of course, our city manager's responsible for negotiating with the labor unions, but just good to know what's going on from the city council side of things. I'll certainly have to research some more stuff, because there are certainly a few topics that I was not very familiar with. that I was not very familiar with. They gave us some updates on the state budget and various bills that affect local municipalities, which is always helpful, and then just discussing with other people up there from different cities. You know, you can talk with a lot of different people very quickly and just hear what's going on in other cities. So it's very good to network and be able to do that and hopefully bring, you know, helpful things to the table here in East Point. And then I was also able to, because it started a little later in the day than I expected, I stopped by the state Capitol, did a little tour of the state Capitol. If you haven't, I highly recommend. I mean, I'd been there before, but I just hopped on a little tour, and that was fun. And then we also have a new visitor center that opened up in 2022 called Heritage Hall. So if you haven't been up at the Capitol in the last couple of years, go there, check that out. They've got a lot of good information there to learn. And then, I mean, it's just a beautiful building. I feel like every time I walk by it, I have to take a picture of it. So head up to Lansing if you get a chance. And, yeah, I was able to stop in. The Senate was in session, so I hung out in the gallery for a bit and watched them for a minute, and then I stopped by and saw our state representative, Kimberly Edwards, and chatted with her for a little bit. So that was nice that, I guess, it started a little later, unexpectedly did all that, so that was, that was kind of fun. Then also, just a couple of quick things going on in the community. Of course, the Grashit Cruise is coming up, and I, me as well as Councilman Curly, oh, there, I thought you were, you're just behind a couple people there. I thought you disappeared for a second. I did the charity poker, volunteered for that, so that was a good time. If anyone's interested in helping out the Grashit Cruise raise money, do that, that's kind of an interesting thing to do. And then the Memorial Day Parade also needs people. If you're interested in helping us plan it, or in volunteer, or in participating in the parade, or if you want to donate to help offset the DPW and police costs, you can go to ACFVO.com. It's the, it's a very lengthy name for the group that puts on the, the Memorial Day Parade. Reach out to me if you don't remember that, ACFVO.com, but you can donate or reach out to us to participate. So do that, and that was all. State of the City was nice earlier. Good job, Mr. Mayor. And, yeah, I think that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bishadlik.
First of all, I'd like to apologize for missing the State of the City today. I did see a snippet of it on Facebook, so thank you for doing the speech for us. Secondly, congratulations on the fire truck. That's amazing. It's good news. And lastly, with respect to the decision that I made today on the lane, five lanes on Nine Mile, it's, it's been talked about ad nauseam, so I'll keep it short. I do believe I made the right decision previously, and the only reason I changed my mind was because of the D obligation. I couldn't risk the funding aspect of it, so I had to do the right thing and vote that way. So I just wanted to explain that. And lastly, with respect to the recreational marijuana, I know there's a lot of controversy about it, but I'd also like to put a different spin on things. I know everybody's worried about crime and use and whatnot, and I certainly don't condone it in young people or criminal activities or anything like that, but I'd like to give a different perspective. I know doctors and lawyers who actually utilize marijuana, and myself. My husband is gone, but when he was going through cancer, they opened a recreational facility, and I know, we drove to Hazel Park and we were able to get, he doesn't, he didn't smoke or anything like that, and he didn't even want to use it, but we were grateful to be able to get edibles so that he was able to help with some of the cancer pain and stuff. So there can be beneficial aspects to it as well. Friends who have MS and they utilize marijuana as well. So I, I don't want everybody to think that this is such a terrible thing. It's, it's just a way of bringing some additional business to our community. I would love to see, you know, numerous businesses come here. I'd like to see some, you know, entertainment come here. I mean, boogie fever, bring on, bring them on in, you know, X-throwing, something to bring the kids in, some, some kind of entertainment, some kind of community, things that we could bring in. I'd love for businesses to come to East Point. And, and that's all that I want to do, is I want to encourage the ones that we have here to stay, and encourage more to come here. I think we have a beautiful community, and I just want to expand on that. So I'm gonna let you go, and thank you.
Thank you. I guess I'll start at the gate by just saying regarding Nine Mile, again, I thought, I think feasibly, if we had gotten, could get all the agencies together and on the same page, it's possible we could have gotten this done in time and not lose the funding, but again, I just thought it was too risky. I think just from what I've seen so far, it's, there, there have been too many things, hurdles added to the process. Regarding the email that was shared in the agenda packet from M.DOT, which does indicate that I had a call with M.DOT, and that Senator Kleinfeld was on it, I wanted to explain that she was not involved in this process regarding our city. I contacted her chief of staff to ask, who, who at M.DOT do I contact? Who's in charge of the local agency program? They provided that name through emails. I set up the call. The head of that program is Bruce. I set the call up with them. She was simply there to listen. As you can imagine, she's fielding a lot of phone calls about the status of the project too. That was a meeting that I had to gain information, and I've done the same with SEMCOG as well. I've called a lot of people. The process of getting funding for a project like this is much more complicated than, than I think, if you don't, haven't spent the time on it, there's so many different agencies and approval process, processes to go through. It is a very tedious project. So although we get our memos and updates from administration and from Mr. Kern, it takes, I think, a lot more time to fully understand how everything, how those moving parts work together. So that's why I, you know, as that email indicates, I was having contact and asking questions of agencies because I was trying to make sure that I understood the project. Thank you to everyone for going to the State of the City. The, Christina Gibson from the school district and Judge Galen gave excellent speeches. The Chamber of Commerce did a great job, is really well-attended. I know there were over 100 tickets sold. I was told that it was a larger turnout than we typically had, and we had a lot of other representatives there. Mark Hopko was present, Candace Miller. It was just an impressive turnout, and I think a really well-run event. And I'll leave it with that. I have nothing further. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
So moved.
Please, color roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at 9:35.